Really, I like it the way it's set up now. I would just.
Good morning. We are recording. It's 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
Today is-- good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. A regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a WebEx teleconference format for today's meeting. If you would like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you're identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances, please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to two minutes for a public comment. Members in the audience who have filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order that they are received, and online speakers will be taken in the order that they appear in the WebEx program, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak today and are having issues with the Raise Your Hand feature, please physically raise your hand or do something for us to be able to recognize you. Each vote today will be a verbal voice-- verbal or voice vote-- I can't say that, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item, we are taking up today. There will be a roll call vote by district. And for those who are new to the audience and wondering why I'm handling the meeting, it's because we have no chairman yet. So we will be doing that here shortly. The first order of business is roll call by district. Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
At this time, I would like to invite everyone to stand and join the Board of Supervisors during the invocation by Pastor Arthur Fox, New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. I'm going to read from Psalm 23. The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside still waters. He restores my soul. He leads me in paths of righteousness for His name's sake. Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil. You are with me, and your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil. My cup overflows. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for taking us through another year and allowing us to be here safely. We thank you for each and every member of this board that serves and all the staff that serves our county so well. We ask your blessing upon them. You would guide them in paths of righteousness, and that they would make decisions that are wise and good. We pray for our governor and legislature and the courts, that they would rule righteously and do what is good for the people according to the vows that they took as they took oath of office. We pray especially for this board, that you would grant them help as they make decisions today that are important. Give them help to be in agreement, and grant that this day we might glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Red begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution. Next order of business is the reorganization of the Board of Supervisors to elect the chairman and vice chairman for 2023. That's hard to think of. At this time, I declare the office of chairman vacant and call for nominations.
At this time, I know Supervisor Fagundes, it'd be his turn to be chairman, and you choose not to be chairman?
Well, I'd like to explain to the board and also anyone else, I have-- I'm gonna-- I'm scheduled for surgery this first of the year.
Brain, or?
No, they're gonna-- just a replacement. We'll know where we're at.
All right.
Don't bring a wheelbarrow, just a paper bag. And I'd like to explain why. I'd like to stay out this year because I don't know if my responsibility is gonna be with the surgery, and if it works out, hopefully, I'll be grateful. If not, I don't want to put the board in any burden of all.
But you would like to postpone it till next year, if at all, right?
Hopefully, I'll be here.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's no questions or comments or further action, I'll make a motion to nominate Supervisor Richard Valley for chairman.
I'll say.
Are there any other nominations?
Move nominations to be closed.
Thank you. Seeing-- let's see. If there are no other nominations, let's go by roll call. Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yeah.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Chairman Valley. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I won't-- I promise I won't mess it up. Thanks, Supervisor, for being-- for nominating. Appreciate the support of the board and look forward to-- as we renew. Uh, thank you, Supervisor. Thanks, Supervisor. How about I-- I'll keep the bottom and you keep the top? And best of luck to you this year as well, sir. It's a pleasure. We started same time, November 2008, and can't believe it's January 2023, but here we go, and we have a new board member, and congratulations, Supervisor Robinson. Look forward to working with you over the years.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Here's something a little different.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman.
2023, here we come. Thank you.
In front of you?
The first item is the-- well, the next item B is the office of the vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors is declared vacant, and a call for nominations is made.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Verboon for vice chair for 23, and close nominations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a nomination in a second.
Madam Clerk, with that nomination by Supervisor Fagundes and second by Supervisor Robinson, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
So that means I gotta fix all your mistakes.
That's right. I'm gonna take next Tuesday off. Congratulations, Supervisor. Ready to rock and roll. Here we go. Okay, unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or on any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
I do. The first speaker is Andreas Borges.
Morning, Senator. Congratulations, Chairman Valley and Vice Chair Verboon. Colleagues, it's a pleasure to be here. Chairman, if I may ask your permission, I have a pre-prepared statement I'd like to read into the record. You also have a physical copy of it. Would I be allowed to go over the two-minute time limit, if that's permissible?
Is that okay with the board?
Yep.
I don't mind.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Chairman and supervisors, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to explain a very serious situation with the registrar of Kings County, a situation that has enormous consequences well beyond a race for the California State Senate, but one that reaches the foundation of county institution and legal fairness in the democratic process. As a former Fresno County supervisor, I thought your board might appreciate a brief reference to the laws that control the recounting of ballots. Both the California Elections Code and the Secretary of State regulations require a legal presumption that the signature on the mail-in ballot is the voter's signature. It is a legal presumption that must be overcome before a voter may have his or her ballot excluded from the count. An exact match, therefore, is specifically not required by law. Instead, similar characteristics in signature are sufficient to determine a signature's validity. Further, the Elections Code and Elections Regulations provide the registrar must consider certain discrepancies, such as initials, shortened or rearranged names, stylistic changes, age-related penmanship, handwriting surfaces, and hastily written signatures, just to mention some. Here, the Kings County Registrar could not have complied with the mandatory review criteria imposed by the Secretary of State. Last Tuesday, the relevant parties convened and were presented with approximately 150 mail-in ballots involving signatures. With an average time of less than 10 seconds-- 10 seconds-- both parties were forced to examine, consider, and render a decision on whether to challenge a particular ballot. Thereafter, despite numerous objections by both parties, the registrar forced the parties to address the approximately 29 challenge ballots in the same egregiously fast process to which verdicts were rendered by the registrar without providing rationale, reasoning, or criteria used to reach a decision. In short, 150 ballots, and then an additional 29 challenge ballots were dispatched by the registrar in a record time of approximately 1 hour and 45 minutes. To put this in perspective, that means the registrar allotted approximately 49 seconds-- 49 seconds-- for a complete determination of approximately 179 separate matters, including the physical processing time of each ballot review, each ballot challenge, and counterargument, and a written verdict. Contrast this with Fresno or Tulare or Kings Counties, where only a mere fraction of challenge ballots were determined in a similar amount of time. Under these circumstances, it is clear the registrar could not have complied with the mandatory review criteria imposed by the Secretary of State, and consequently deprived the parties of their legal right to meaningfully review the ballots in question. It is also clear the registrar lacked basic knowledge of California recount law. First, there was no apparent presumption by the registrar that the signature on the mailed ballot was the voter's signature. The registrar's operational premise instead likely reversed the presumption, that each ballot was presumptively invalid rather than valid. Second, the registrar categorically denied a number of challenge ballots because initials were used or names were in a different sequence in direct violation of state regulation 20960. Thirdly, the registrar categorically disallowed Hurtado's team from challenging any ballot. The other side was denied the opportunity to challenge ballots. It was only until lawyers for the Hurtado team organized an effort to convince county council or their representative that the registrar was clearly in violation of the Elections Code and that they were permitted eventually to levy challenges. Finally, the registrar forced me to sign an illegal-- an inappropriate document that attempted to override Shepherd's formal recount parameters as a precondition to proceeding with specific recount activities. Under these circumstances, it is clear the registrar of Kings County lacked basic knowledge of recount law to the material detriment of the recount process. Finally, the registrar is disenfranchising the vote in Kings County, I'm sorry to say. The Shepherd team has no knowledge of how these votes-- of these voters voted in the Senate rates, as all the ballots remained unopened. So this is not an effort to rehabilitate only favorable votes, but to disallow votes under the processes in place conflicts with the basic tenets of election law and plain fairness to both candidates, both Shepherd and Hurtado. My respectful request to you is that you encourage the registrar in the most appropriate ways possible to allow for these specific ballots to be lawfully processed. The recount cannot be deemed complete by Kings County without this remedy, to which we are seeking your assistance. In fact, I would extend an invitation to every member of this board to attend a secondary review and ensure firsthand that it is conducted fairly and legally. There should be no need for the Shepherd campaign to resort to litigation when Kings County has an opportunity to correct glaring mistakes at this very time. Supervisors, thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you.
You.
Madam Clerk, anybody else?
The next speaker is David Shepherd.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Kings County.
Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I'll try to be timely here. My name is David Shepherd, and I am a candidate for State Senate in District 16. Out of respect to the board and others here today, I'm reading an abridged version, but have submitted a more expansive version with documents and statements attached. You should have that in front of you. I'm here today on behalf of the voters of Kings County. My campaign recently filed for a recount in Senate District 16, in which we were granted ample opportunity in each county to review ballots that had been disregarded by the registrar voters due to issues such as signature mismatches. This recount, however, was not granted a fair opportunity to review signature mismatches by Kings County ROV, as our team was provided in Tulare, Fresno, and Kern Counties. Kings County ROV only provided 1 hour and 45 minutes to review around 150 ballots that had been disqualified. This hastily conducted review not only disenfranchises voters, but it also leaves compelling evidence that Kings County will not have provided an equitable recount in comparison to every other county in Senate District 16. As this board just heard in detail about the legal issues and ramifications regarding the Kings County ROV's actions, I believe it is necessary to have it written into the record the names of some of the voters in which Kings County ROV chooses to continue to reject. Craig Marcus Robinson, Danny Roger Robinson, Brian Lopez, Valerie Luna, Mohamed Ali Al Ghazali, Cody Gale Kinder, Daniela Teresa Ramirez, Nichols Gage Williams, Richard Martin Laws, Luis Lopez, Michael R. Jacobs, Julian Ortega, Jordan Perez, Maria Guadalupe Navarro, Gabriella Rose, Brittany Denise Young, Anna Cardenas Rodriguez, Corey Marie Rowe, Andrew Jason Rake, Brian Nicole Smith, Beatrice George, Eva Zaragoza Sanchez, David Robert Lindsay, Melissa Lockhart, Theodore Leon, Arthur Hill Nelson, Isaac Mendez, Pat A. Nevs, Jacob Anthony Pepe. There are over 120 more names just like these, whose votes will not be counted. My campaign has asked that the Kings ROV review the names of these individuals in an equitable manner, and it was declined, the opportunity, on multiple occasions. It appears that there's more of an infinite emphasis to finish this recount quickly than to conduct the recount in greater detail. Greater detail is, in fact, the purpose of a recount and what my campaign has expected to be delivered upon with the fees that we are paying to the county. I look to the judgment of the Board of Supervisors regarding this formal complaint. The separation of powers delineated in state law gives the registrar of voters considerable discretionary authority during elections. I would hope that my grievances are heard by this board and that the county will act with equity and justness in regards to asking for a sufficient review of the signature mismatched ballots and give the constituents of Kings County an opportunity to have their voices heard before this election is finished. I'm not asking for any favors, any special treatment, special requests, or anything illegal. In fact, I'm calling on the most basic right of any American to be exercised, that those that wish to participate in elections should be given the opportunity to do so. It is these 150 or so voters of Kings County that have not had a sufficient review equitable to what the constituents of Fresno, Tulare, and Kern Counties have received in the Senate District 16 recount. My commitment to the constituents of Senate District 16 on the campaign trail was that they would no longer be forgotten, and my resolve will remain the same for as long as I am a candidate or elected. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker card that we have, and I-- just for the record, I will let you know that both of the documents that you have received will become part of the permanent record, and it doesn't appear anyone on line has their hand raised, and we have no written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the chambers? Morning, Ms. Sevilla.
Chairman, members of the board, I hope you guys had a great day here. I'm Mr. Board of Kings County. I just come before you to give you a quick update in regards to the recount for Senate District 16. We started the recount on December 27th. There was approximately 26,700 or so ballots that we had to go through. Part of the process last week was to sort out the ballots from A and B. We isolated Card B. We grabbed Card A and delivered them through the appropriate precinct throughout the week. We finished that process early on Friday, about 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so we started counting the actual ballots today. Part of the process that was afforded to the Shepherd campaign and the Hurtado campaign was to review and challenge signatures that were presented to them during the process, in the presence of my county council, in presence of their council as well. The process, it was about 151 ballots that we went through. There were several challenges that they asked for. I rejected the challenges. There were some that were withdrawn in the second round, which is the second round of reviewing their challenges at their discretion, not my discretion. They're the ones that asked for those challenges to be withdrawn, so we took that. Once we finished that process, prior to beginning that process, I was giving the-- I afforded them the opportunity to request which documents they would like to review as it relates to relevant material. Their request was to review the miss-signature process of ballots, along with the undervotes and overvotes. Those two-- the latter two are not going to be able to be reviewed until we're done with the entire account. There were several discrepancies in the requests received on December 13 by the Shepherd campaign. Those discrepancies were addressed. Communication was sent back and forth between us and their attorneys. We fabricated the process to do a hand count of the relevant material, and we moved into the machine count of the actual ballots. And that's where we are today, and we're going to be running those ballots as we speak. They're actually being run right now. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, to avoid this being an unnoticed agenda item, if you have any minor questions or for clarification, but robust discussion wouldn't be appropriate right now.
Let me ask this, Council. Are we gonna have a closed session item on this next week?
I believe that we can justify that. We can put this on for closed session for next week under exposure to litigation.
I know we're not supposed to respond too much, but at this time, anyone on the board have anything that they want to add or--
For clarification, the recount was asked for by the Shepherd campaign, correct?
That is-- that is correct, sir.
And he paid amount of money to have it done on his behalf, correct?
That's correct. So part of the process in their election code is the request was responsible to pay for the recount to each individual county. We're independent from each other. There's four counties that cover-- SC-16 covers four counties. Each county has their own formula how to estimate the cost of the recount. We submitted those counts to the Shepherd campaign and their attorneys early on in the process. Those numbers have fluctuated simply because we fabricated the recount process. We're gonna do a hand count. We moved that over to a machine count. The cost became a lot lower than one expected. We had issues with payment being on time. There was flexibility given to the Shepherd campaign by 30 minutes to have them come and allow to pay the dollar amount that was due on that day. They did. They showed up at 9:15. They paid. They came back later that afternoon and paid for the entire week, which is this week. So we're caught up on payment. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. Verboon, that is absolutely correct. Shepherd campaign is responsible to pay-- to continue to pay for the process of the recount. Otherwise, taxpayers' money.
Does that give him any authority to ask to have something reviewed again?
It-- I--
Maybe I can ask.
Maybe I can just clarify with that. There is law-- there are laws that govern the recount, and those laws-- county council has been advising with respect to those laws and believe that the recount has been done in a legal fashion. The requesting the recount initiates the process, but it doesn't confer rights outside of what the statutes require.
That's the only question I have. When county councils referred to in these documents by the Shepherd team and by you, are you referring to our county council, your council? You're the one who's working personally in the room on the recount and--
Susan Fisher, who is in the room right now. Susan, can you stand up for just a moment? It's been the deputy county council who has been directly advising the elections official. I have become involved in this situation personally during some of these events, so I am familiar, but Susan Fisher has been advising them personally.
Okay, thank you. No questions, ma'am. I just wanted it for the record and for my knowledge as well.
How much does it-- what does the recount cost in Kings County?
It depends. If we continue to move forward with the count today, they paid up just under $40,000. Just a couple hundred dollars short of $40,000.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. Yep. It's a lot of money, but it's within the rights, right? They're able-- they were given the opportunity to file for a recount. The recount was initiated. We started the recount. We went through the process. The representatives of the Shepherd campaign that showed up on the 27th were greeted with an introduction. They were given the opportunity to come forward to the challenge table, in the presence of my county council and the presence of both parties. That review process was initiated. The opportunity to challenge those ballots was afforded to them. The ultimate authority of rejection of those ballots is on me. I felt compelled to reject those challenges based on what I saw in the handwriting that was compared to the envelopes that we received during the election, and therefore, you know, the-- I just don't think that there is enough evidence for me to accept any of those challenges.
And I'm recommending that further discussion be delayed till it's properly agendized.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Sevilla. Appreciate your update as well. Appreciate the update this morning from-- from both sides, too, from Shepherd's team. Thank you for your attendance.
You are welcome. And again, any member of the public is welcome to come to the elections office and observe the process that we have going on today. So that's another one of my messages that I want to give out to the board and to the constituents of Kings County, is that we are doing everything with the law within Kings County. Anyone's welcome to observe and ask questions of the process, so as long as they follow the observer rules that we have in place.
For the record, the recount is here at Department of Elections, or did you have to rent space to do the recount?
So we have the-- last week, we-- operations were at the multipurpose room simply because of the size of the equipment and materials we needed. There was 82 bins that we laid out through that multipurpose room on 20 tables, and those 82 bins represent the 82 precincts that we have in Kings County that cover SD-16. So in order for us to accomplish and to be able to be efficient and break down those precincts, we have to break them down by mail trays. Once we separated Card A and Card B, as mentioned, Card B was isolated and boxed up and taken back in. Card A was then stacked up, and during the last couple of days of last week, we sorted them out into the precincts that were appropriate for that ballot. We boxed them up, took them back to our office, and moving forward is a machine count, which means we use our tabulators that we used during the election. We invited both parties last Thursday to come and observe the pre-lap, which is the logic and accuracy test, along with the test deck that we did prior to the count. Both parties were present. We reviewed some adjudicated ballots as well, and then we afforded that opportunity as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sevilla. Appreciate it.
I have one more question. So if you have 151 ballots that have signatures that doesn't match, there's their register voters page. You sent out a flyer to each one of those people that the signature didn't match?
Yes, yes, that's permitted.
And if they still come back at any time, will they both be counted?
No, that's negative. There is a-- there's a cure process in the Elections Code, right? There's a process to miss signatures. There's a process to lose signatures on the ballots. We in Kings County try our hardest to get our voters to register every three years so we can update their signatures and capture that image, and we can use it to compare to the ballots we received. If a signature's received and there's a missed signature, we send a hello letter to the voter and say, "Your letter-- your signature did not match. Please complete this. Send it back to us." Those 151 ballots that we're talking about, Ms. Verboon, the letter we never got back, the cure letter, was never received back. Therefore, there's nothing for us to compare it to.
So you sent a secure letter, like a-- So, you sent a secure letter, like a register letter, or just regular mail?
Mail. Yep. We, in Kings County, we do in 20, within 24 hours, they'll get a letter, well, it's going to be mailed out, but it's not first-class mail. It's just regular U.S. Postal Service.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the update, sir.
Any other questions? Done. Thank you so much for your support, and again, come join us, come see the process, and let me know if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sevilla.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anyone else in the chambers on schedule? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to consent calendar. There's two items under consent calendar. If all members have had time to review the consent calendar, there's no questions or comments, so Chair?
In order, can we go back to do the approval of the minutes?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mark.
Made a mistake. Sue Verboon, will you please take over?
Doug's not watching out for you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. Item A, report out a closed session from the regular meeting for December 20th, 2022. Counsel, is there anything to report out?
There's nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for December 20th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Sue Fagundes, second by Sue Verboon. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Let's stand.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, item passes with one extension, four in favor. Next item is a consent calendar, two items up for consent at this time. There's no questions or comments. Chair is ready to entertain a motion.
Take a motion to approve, approve the consent counter as presented.
Second.
Motion by Verboon, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Both items pass, five in favor. Now, we're moving on to regular agenda items. First item, A comes from the IT Department. Mr. Devlin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to our newest supervisor, Mr. Rusty Robinson. What I have before you is a multi-factor authentication and single sign-on agreement with Okta Company and Techniques. Kings County currently uses a product called Improvata for multi-factor and single sign-on. Following significant research and testing, we found the combination of Okta and Techniques offer a far superior alternative for both multi-factor authentication and single sign-on. This added layer of security will be applied to all users and computers in the county, helping to ensure the security and integrity of county data and infrastructure. This item requires board approval as the agreement exceeds the purchasing manager's $50,000 authorization limit. The two-year cost is $264,400, which was previously approved out of ARPA funding that your board approved on September 20th. Your board had approved $279,700, so there will be a $15,300 difference returned to the ARPA fund. The business impact statement, once implemented, the Okta system will work as a multi-factor authentication system initially. Users will enter their password. The Okta system will send them a notification, text, or, or phone call to, even to their desk phone, to verify the user's login. Then the user will be logged into the computer. As for the single sign-on portion, Okta securely saves the user's passwords and usernames, then fills them into the appropriate applications and websites as they use them. Okta offers some of the best multi-factor authentication and single sign-on appliances on the market. With this system, we're able to offer multiple options to departments and users for their multi-factor authentication. This gives the county the enhanced flexibility, which will help ease the transition to desktop multi-factor authentication, while also offering single sign-on to departments, most of which have not had such a system. Techniques builds the desktop client, which allows these systems to work with, within our environment. With a mobile workforce and quickly changing technical and security environment, multi-factor authentication and single sign-on enables us to ensure county workers and county infrastructure are secure. Multi-factor authentication is now a must-have in order to obtain cybersecurity insurance policies. County Council approves the terms and conditions with Okta, but would have preferred to change the legal venue from San Francisco to County of Kings. County Council would not approve the terms and conditions with Techniques as they refuse to use the County of Kings as the jurisdiction as they are based in Texas. Risk management cannot endorse the insurance policy as the companies would not disclose their types and limits of coverage. Okta has insurance that is of adequate limits and types, but will not incorporate the terms in our agreement. Techniques refuses to change terms, disclose, or incorporate their insurance coverage limits. However, the county is more at risk by not having multi-factor authentication than accepting what the county information technology department perceives as a minimal risk to the county. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board, comments?
I have a question.
Sue Robinson?
So, how did we learn of this system? Are there several other counties in the state that are, that are also using this system, and how is it working in, in those areas?
We did contact several other counties, their tech, their technical folks, just to make sure that these two products work well together. We also looked at what's called the Gartner Magic Quadrant. It basically outlines which companies have the, the most vision of product that's like, makes basically the most features, and the other axis is their ability to execute, which basically means like you're not, it's not some fly-by-night company. If you have problems with the system, they get on, they fix it for you. They don't just leave you hanging like a small company might. So, they, this company was, well, actually, both these companies were in the upper right, which means they have both those two factors running for them. They both have the, the most features, and they both have the most ability to execute. So, we use that. That's research that's, it's Gartner is the company that does that research for county, or for anybody in IT.
And I have one other question for Counsel. So, Counsel's moderately opposed, vehemently opposed? I mean, do, do you, do you think the benefits outweigh the detriments?
Well, I rely on the IT Department to understand what the potential detriments are. But as far as moderately opposed or vehemently opposed, the county council's failure to recommend does not necessarily indicate opposition at all. It just means that these terms are outside of what we would normally approve. We would nor, not normally approve jurisdiction to be in Texas or venue to be in San Francisco or, and we would normally require insurance. So, because we can't procure those terms in these contracts, we're not recommending it, but, but we do rely on the IT Department's assessment of the value of this contract and the risk, and believe that if the board were to approve this agreement, that it would not be an imprudent action.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Supervisor Robinson?
From the board?
Nev, seconds.
Motion by Fagundes. Thank you. Second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, five in favor. Thanks, sir.
This will fix all our problems, right?
Create a whole bunch more.
Okay, next item, B comes from Administration. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January 2nd, 2023, at 12:00 noon, Sarah Hacker took office as the new district attorney. The board has salary-setting authority for county employees, including elected officials. The salary resolution calls for the district attorney to be paid based on salary band two, which is, ranges between $12,000 and $17,000 per month. As a point of reference, the monthly equivalent salary for the district attorney was $16,369 as of December 26, 2022. At this time, we are requesting your board set the salary for, of the new district attorney, Sarah Hacker, to be effective January 2nd, 2023, at 12:00 noon. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're saying same salary is what you just said?
It's not uncommon for that to take place.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve it presented.
Motion by Verboon, second by Robinson. Madam, any other comments or questions, seeing none? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
All right, item passes, and five in favor. One more item from Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, the Board of Supervisors formally approves their board and committee assignments for the ensuing year. Each supervisor was given the opportunity to review and/or revise the assignments as needed. The proposed committee assignments are part of your board agenda packet, and we are seeking your approval of the 2023 board and committee assignments. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Additionally, the clerk of the board, Catherine Ventrell, was the staff member who processed this item and can fill in any details I may not be able to answer.
Thank you, Catherine. You do a good job. I think you sent this out to us about a month ago, so everyone had an opportunity to look and review. Do you have anything you want to add before we go to the board?
Rusty was gracious enough to allow me to place his name in all of the spots that Craig had his name, so thank you.
Okay. Did anyone else want any of Superintendent's committee assignment? Sue Verboon, I'm, uh?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I just, I'm just going over it again. I'm good with it.
Sue Nevs, you good with these assignments? Got all the same ones and good to go? Sue Fagundes?
Yes, and I make a motion to approve the assignment, committee assignment. I'll second.
Okay. Sue Robinson, you saw your assignments. Two of them are two-week deployments to overseas.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay. So, we got the first, the second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Item passes, five in favor. We are got our assignments for 202023. We'll rock and roll. Every Tuesday. Mine's to be here every Tuesday, and then some, and that's my commitment. Okay, here we go. Board member announcements or reports. At this time, we'll do the reports on the last couple of weeks. We'll start with Supervisor Joe Nevs. Sue, are you ready?
Yeah, really, nothing going on. Wrapped up the Santa Claus visits for the season and took, took some time to recover from that, and appreciate to be back.
Appreciate you. Thank you for your services, Santa of Kings County as well.
Yeah.
Sue Fagundes?
Well, first of all, I want to welcome Rusty, who are flying, and hopefully have a good year and, and just move on, whatever we, challenges there we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue Fagundes. Supervisor Verboon?
I had a quiet week with Christmas and all the activities, and I'd like to welcome Supervisor Rusty Robinson, and I might change, make some changes on here, give them some more activities, but we'll see how that goes, and wish them all the best. As far as this year goes, we hope for a new prosperous new year. We got some rain finally. It looks like we're going to have heavy rain the next two days, so that's good for everybody. And, well, I got, I got a house full of people, not used to that.
You got to get home to them.
No, no, I'm, keep me awake. We got little kids. I'm like, whoa, sorry. I, my days are done with the little kids. Sarah Hacker's in the audience, we're sure the best. Hope it works out for her. I think she's a six-year stint.
Oh, yeah, six years.
If you want to increase in salary, you have to come back and beg us for it later on, so. Then we get to be real critical.
So, uh, so the DA, the sheriff, and the assessor, six-year term, starting now?
Not about the assessor, assessor too?
I don't believe the assessor's a six-year term. I think it's the DA and the sheriff.
All right.
Well, and let me clarify, that's just for this initial term. The, they, once the new law becomes effective and another election takes place, it'll be four-year terms again.
On presidential elections? Okay. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Are there any, anybody?
Yes, yes. So, belated, happy holidays to everybody. I just have a few thanks. For starters, you don't need a house full of kids if you have a six-and-a-half-year-old like I do. He makes a nest noise for everybody. I'd first and foremost like to thank the people of District Four. It's, it's a true opportunity to serve on this board. It's an honor to serve, and I'll do my best to work hard and stand formed, and as Supervisor Fagundes says, and to listen. If you have a question or concern, please call me, and we'll learn the answer together. I'm the newbie for a while, so I'm sure I'll have many questions, hopefully as thoughtful as Supervisor Peterson's. And I'd be remiss and probably locked out of my house if I didn't thank my wife and my little boy, Patrick, for all their help. Their campaign help was, was quite something, and, and they, they keep me humble. Also, without my wife's Spanish and Portuguese, I'd probably be sitting in the audience today. Also, to thank this board, Mr. Hill, Ms. Freeman, Sheriff Robinson, all the department heads, and Catherine, and Diane. Everybody has been wonderful. They've been gracious. They've been inclusive, and even Supervisor Verboon, most days. And lastly, thank you, God, for the rain. We appreciate it. It was, it's much needed, so that's my report.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome, Ms. Robinson, and to your son. All right. Only thing I have to report is just looking forward to 2023 as well. I think tentatively, last I heard from Corcoran City Hall is we'll be unveiling the Veterans Memorial that the board funded in April, so I'm, I think we're going to meet this Friday with some Corcoran city staff, and as soon as we get a hard date, keep the board informed, because you're all going to be a part of it as well. We look forward to, to that day coming. So, the new park looks really good in Corcoran. They're doing a good job. There's a new, a welcome to Corcoran sign. It's very beautiful. It's been lit up. Every letter in the Corcoran sign is, can be a different color, so if you're in Corcoran right now and you enter at night, you'll see all the Christmas colors on the Corcoran sign. Everything's red, white, and green, so it looks very nice. So, we look forward to that day coming. So, moving on to board correspondence and upcoming events.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other than the two documents referenced during public comment today, your board received no other board correspondence. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health is hosting a family member support group on Tuesday, January 3rd, tonight, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at 460 Kings County Drive, Suite 101 in Hanford. They will be providing support to families and others. There will be a light meal provided and interpersonal services that will be provided upon request. The Roadie Club of Hanford will be hosting its 45th Annual Crab Feed fundraiser on Saturday, February 4th, 2023, at the Hanford Civic Auditorium. Tickets are $100, and there are also various sponsorship opportunities available ranging from $1,000 to $5,000. For upcoming agenda items, Administration has two items. The quarterly update from Waste Management and consideration for ARPA Cemetery District Agreement. Department of Finance has consideration for an agreement with Management of America, Inc. for consulting services on state mandated claims. Human Services Agency has four items. Consideration for a contract with UC Davis. Consideration regarding transitional housing program application resolution. Consideration regarding Housing Navigators Program, Round Two Application Resolution, and consideration regarding THP Round Four and No Place Like Home Round One Application Resolution. Public Health has two items. Consideration regarding DIS Workforce Development Grant and consideration regarding approval of an HIV Care Agreement Amendment, excuse me. Public Works has consideration regarding fiscal year 2122 Senate Bill One, funded Kings County roadway improvement project notice of completion, and the Sheriff's Office has consideration regarding approval of a firearms purchase. That concludes my report. I'd also like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and welcome the two new county members to the family. Looking forward to working with everybody.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, the next, before we move on to that, just double checking if anyone forgot anything to add. We're good to go? Okay. Then that takes us to closed session. We have two items in closed session. One, significant exposure to litigation, and the other is public personnel matter, Director of Finance. That leads us to the adjournment. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, everyone, for being here today, online and in the chambers. Thank you.